Rick.
A minute. Just turned.
A minute.
A minute to win it?
A minute to win it.
Lost a minute, because I'll never win it.
Make sure you write it properly, Jim.
But I just had some questions from the road department. What we did if we want to. I don't know. How we do this.
Oh, there you go. You got it.
Sorry, girl, that was not happening.
The image, pleasure.
I mean.
No, Liza was starting. What's that? No, she was saying make it today. Let me know when you're ready, Carmen.
I'm ready.
Oh, you're ready? Okay.
Yep.
All right, five thirty-one, we'll call this special meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. Is our motion approved, the agenda? Want to give it to Jamie, seconded by Rick. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Hi.
Rick? All vote aye, that motion passes. Okay, twenty-four budget discussions. I was hoping Jean was gonna be here, because he was the one that kinda had most of the questions, but. Anybody have questions?
Well, if you wanna, should I start with this, or do you wanna let her go?
Doesn't matter.
Don't go for it.
Go.
Okay, I guess. Sure, I'd say, Ashley, I guess whoever. Prepare this so we'd have a little. Kinda what my thinking is, is. You know, looking at the bottom part portion of our budget. The ones in the blue were. Twenty-three was estimated increase. The ones would be with the twenty-four in the brown, that's what we added. The one fifty, and then we were looking at roughly two dollars. Problem we're having is finding help. Problem we're having is retaining help. And the other problem we have is, it costs us a lot of money to. You know, to train people. The other one I have also is, this wasn't quite as one, quite as far, but also I just talked with the road people and Jean. Ken gave me, I didn't have all the increases on there, but. I know there's probably more out there, but this is the one that I started with. The thing about it is that we have nineteen and twenty dollar an hour wages, it's pretty tough to get help or keep help. I started with the sheriff's department, it's because I feel that. You know, we have a revenue stream there at the. At the jail, and we need to protect that revenue stream for a general fund. When you got people that are four years, and they're still at twenty dollars and fifty cents, it's pretty hard to. You can't hire anybody yet. Well, there's one at nineteen fifty. Then she was there four years, what I was told. The new guy started at nineteen fifty also, and they got these open spots. My bottom, my questions are, like. I mean, we've got other money out there, I don't know how you go about doing it, but I mean, trying to spend the money on a wage study, I'd rather spend money on.
Wages?
Wages. That's my opinion.
I feel like we have a wage study that's not being used across the board already. I don't really find it necessary to do another one if we're not gonna use the one we already have. It's a lot of money for a wage study, when we could put that money towards the employees we do have, and I'm not talking for myself, because. Aside, I don't care what my wage is, but I care, like Rick said, what these. Shift work and nights, weekends, holidays.
Yeah, and then we've got other groups out there too, but I mean, this is where I started.
Yeah. The road department too, I mean, even some of them have been there nine, ten years, and they're. Not making very much.
And you know, like, one of the operator, we couldn't hire once they moved or not, but now they got an open truck job. They have an open spot at the shift department, and we get zero applications. I mean, we got fair insurance. You know, it's pretty hard to. Hire somebody at nineteen fifty an hour, or. Twenty-four dollars an hour, and when you start, starting out, it's. You're a truck driver at that weight, twenty-three dollars an hour. But that's where, where I'm at with that, how do we get there? I'm gonna have to ask for help.
Well, kind of what I've been looking at, budget wise, and it's more of a big scope thing, so. We had our preliminary, we need to get to the final, we can't exceed the preliminary. How we get there, we gotta work within the budget. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of needs, there's a lot of wants. Budget amendments can happen, we just can't tax more than what we did on the preliminary, so, you know, come next Wednesday. If we don't see any places that. On what we're gonna tax to go down, we can still approve the budget as far as the revenues go. And we, in my opinion, we'd still have time between then and the end of the year, if we wanted to change any of the expenses. It wouldn't necessarily be done in this year, there would just be budget amendments next year.
They would take amendments that would take place up to, on the first of the year, then, is how you do it?
Okay, what I understand and learning from Linda too, is that, okay, for January, once the end of the year ends, we're looking at. How we did in twenty-three. And we're gonna amend anything that we went over, and we're gonna understand why we went over, and that's what makes us better at the budgeting. Now, what we're doing right now is we're setting up twenty-four. Technically, we don't amend it till the end of the year, but through the year, if something you wanna change it, then. You know, like anything over five thousand, and guys, tell me if I'm off, but let's say you wanted to change something, you come in and talk to us. It's just like, when I was short on monies for that grant for the EM, I came in and talked to the commission, so they understood that, yes, I'm gonna go over, and this is why. So as that happens through the year, the department head would come in and say, okay, this is why we're going on, and then everybody knows why, but then at the. End of twenty-four, first part of twenty-five, then we come in and go through and amend everything.
That's what we did here at the beginning, we wish you.
Yes, exactly.
In January of twenty-four, we'll do any changes that we had to do for twenty-three. Right, and that's what your question is, if we do things to twenty-four budget, we would do it. We would, we would need to keep track so that we don't, you know, totally go over.
Like what I'm getting at too, is like, let's say we decide to do this between now and the end of the year, but. We would implement this stuff until the first of the year anyway, is that?
Right.
Correct.
You know, so I mean, so that's when that all gets put into place.
So, so through the budget, if, if we say yes to the dollar fifty an hour across the board, that doesn't go into effect until the beginning of the year. However, if we make any changes between now and the end of the year, they won't take effect until the beginning of the year. If we did, I'm just brainstorming, thinking out loud, say, we did the dollar fifty, and we look at some of these wages, and we wanna make a step increase. We could do that between now and the end of the year, we could do that in January, we could do that in February, if we wanted to say, hey, certain classifications, we're gonna adjust them.
That was my question, is like, can we, can we make wage adjustments based off of years of service? You know, like, maybe everybody gets a dollar fifty, but if you've been here five years or more, you get. Two fifty, or three, I mean, we, we do have some of our staff that are struggling to pay their bills, based off of what our wages are, and that's not okay.
Right, and, and maybe those aren't being across the board, where we would maybe select.
That's why I'm saying like, years of service, like, if you've been here five years, because there is something.
Like, we'll select like certain one, these here are not, and these are.
Because even if we give our, yeah, I get that the new people started at this amount, but if they're gonna get a. Two dollar an hour raise, well then they're still making the same as the people that have been here, five to ten years, or fifteen, like, there's not. There's no reason for them to really stay here, as a.
Yeah, to me, it's like we're putting an investment back into our community, and our, and our county, and everything else, 'cause this, this money goes back to paying. House payments, or taxes, or gas, or insurance, or whatever it is that we're doing, but that's, I mean, we're investing in our own future, that everybody's taking care of our employees, so.
Right, so, just to kinda recap, what I'm saying is that. If we just, to get to the budget point, did the dollar fifty across the board, and then we still looked at after the budget was approved, that's perfectly acceptable.
So I mean, what I'm, my question now is, I understand that portion, but now let's say we. Let's say, I'm just gonna use an example, they brought up the wage study. I'd rather use that money for wages rather than a wage study, is how do we adjust, move that money around in the budget, is my question.
There's, yeah, and like, there is some requests that I think, like, say the ADA building at the shop, it doesn't necessarily, that's a lot of money, maybe it doesn't need to be done.
No.
No.
We can use it.
It was, it was a request, it was a wishlist item, but maybe it doesn't need to happen right now.
I'd rather see that money.
So when do we do that, I guess, of moving?
Well, and there's other things in there too, that you guys have got too, that you've talked about too, I don't know, so.
Well, so if you look at, I'm just gonna look at the general fund, because that's the fund that is the easiest.
This page is my first question.
Yeah, but, so, the one that we approved in July, right, is it July? Yep, that one had the cash reserves on page three at nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Now, we've had a couple revised ones, those reserves are higher, when our mill levy is lower.
Yeah, that was my question, Carmen, I said, some of the numbers.
Okay, okay, the number that you can go higher is that preliminary approved budget, so we're looking at the general fund. The preliminary approved levy amount is two million, nine hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventeen cents.
Line nine.
Yep.
I'm on it.
Yep.
Hold on, hold on. Okay. Yes. When it shows on the fund, it's line nine, but also look at line one, the final appropriation, you can't go above that either. So you've got two numbers to look at, so on one, it's final appropriation, and then on line nine, the levy amount.
So, one A can't go higher, and line nine can't go higher.
Only lower, and then the nine, so those are the two numbers we have to watch.
But in, so say one B, the new copy has twenty-five thousand in it, but the old copy does not, where did that, where did that change? Some of these, I'm, I'm, maybe Travis is asking different, I'm questioning where the changes came from.
That, okay, I wanna see which one you're looking at here, you're looking at.
This is.
That, the, the new one.
The new one.
That twenty-five. Okay, yeah, the, yeah, the old one, it didn't go in there because the calculations are wrong. You gotta remember, this is that new form, we put all the same numbers, and the calculations were correct, and that should have been there, but.
And like, the cash reserve is a million different.
Right, where I upped it to twenty-five percent, because we have to have, there's a certain reserve you need to have, because this is where we wanna end.
And this, like.
And that's why.
Most of it comes because it is a calculation, so this number changes because this number changed, I could get that, but.
But this is the number you can't go above. That's our approved number, and this is the number you can't go above. Cause that's, so, so you're looking at the levied amount, so the red ones is what you wanna watch, and yes, these numbers. But remember, this new form was a new calculation, we checked it with Linda, so.
So the mills are significantly less, because.
And Linda said, mills, we didn't look at the mills, you look at the amount of the mill, that's, that's where we're.
The bills are way less, because when we put everything into the new form, there was one point six million that came in as our cash carryover. When we put in the new form, it brought in regular model, which was three point six, so you're like, it's almost two million dollars, you divide that by, you know, when you put that all in your numbers, that's gonna make a huge difference.
Cause the, yeah, the calculations were off, and this one, they got.
And that's, part of that's based on where we think we're gonna end twenty-three at?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, like, if we didn't budget anything, I'm just gonna pull one revenue source that's not a mill levy, the BLM monies, if we didn't. Estimate any revenues on those, and we get three hundred thousand, that is gonna be pulled in, into the general fund.
That will change, I mean, you know, anytime you change, we have those revenue source monies, that will change that levy to.
Right, well, I mean, that's, that, that could be one of the reasons why that went from one point six to three point six, and.
Right, exactly, yeah, but most of it was just because, um, I think that, before we had the, we were just trying to. Use the phone that was out there, plug numbers in or whatever, rather than starting over, you know, or just start over.
Yes.
Right.
Some of the numbers, like I said, I don't know if they got part plugged, or what happened, that they weren't using calculations anymore, they were actually just. A number that was already in there, was what was carrying forward.
Right, so then, the other thing to look at, line two, the cash reserve, where Carmen said twenty-five percent, that has, that's a maximum, so that can't be exceeded.
Well, you could go up to seventy-five percent. Okay, I got.
Not to exceed seventy.
Oh, okay, gotcha, yep, yep. You, you have it at twenty-five percent, it can go up to seventy-five, okay, so. That's where I'm saying, if we don't change the amount levied on the general fund. That could increase, could keep at the same mill, but then her cash reserve would probably be around that three million dollars, which I think is too much, I'm just saying.
Well, and, and like Linda was saying, that, okay, that twenty-five percent that I put aside, that one million, one point nine million there. She said, when we look at that, that's what, what do we wanna end up with? Cause remember, your reserve is if something really happened, and we needed a cush, that's our cush. But remember, first year, we've been doing this, so we wanna get the feel for this, Dawn and I, but that's, but that's what it's there for, and that's what you should end up with. But anyway, that was the thinking that Linda was saying, so anyway, go ahead.
Right, so, so basically, I'm, I'm trying to answer Rick's questions, and how it would affect the budget, so. You, you brought up the sheriff's department.
Okay.
So if, if you were looking to increase certain portions of the salary, to get them above a certain threshold, that's part of the general fund. Those expenses would go in, that cash reserve would go down. But it's still within the budget, it's still within the levy, and if we could hold, based on the colored sheet. What we had in the preliminary for line nine was two point nine million, right now it's just over two million. So there would actually be a reduction in the general fund mill, if we stayed with the two million being levied. So, that's why I'm saying, when I look at this, I see there's spots where we can do more things, or. That's why I feel comfortable where we're at. There's even possibility to do a couple of the changes that you guys are requesting, and. Meet our preliminary, or even slightly deduct it. So.
I guess personally, if we, if we don't need it, I.
Right, right, and that's like when, when you say, just under two million dollars is cash reserve, that seems excessive, I agree. Where we were at, on the nine hundred thousand, I can kinda go either way with that, so. There's, cause the general fund is general, it can go anywhere, there's certain other funds in here that were at the max, those probably aren't gonna change. There's certain ones, like, the ambulance, or, they're right at there, or like the water resource board, they're in the middle, but. Their budget's kinda set, they need that, the library, we have to match McLean County with, McLean County is gonna hold the three and a half, based on my meeting last night. So we have to hold the three and a half, so that one's kinda set, there's not a lot we can do with that. But I know when I glanced at a few of these things, one of the ones, and it kinda goes with Rick's talking about the road, I think unorganized. Roads on, uh, let's see. Unless these are used just to kinda calculate something, but. Page nine, under the county road fund, estimated mills is zero.
Right, and why that happened was, is, okay, on that transfer sheet, see. I don't know if the road department wants to use, we've got prairie dog funds. So it's kinda up to the road department, you guys, how much of that prairie dogs do you want, so I just added it in, and that's like one point seven million dollars. And I'm sure before you wanna, you know, use fundings for unorganized roads, and the mills on the aid to secondary roads, maybe. We can let some of those and use that, so kinda threw that in there, and that's where it came up.
Right.
I saw most of the prairie dog was earmarked though.
No.
No, I thought which one, I'm in the wrong one then.
Five hundred thousand of it, and it was April twelfth, commission meeting, we approved, it was Charlie and Ken were talking about that milling. County Road twenty-seven mill, they're just finishing up that milling, they used five hundred and forty-some thousand of that, so I took that out of it, and then Dawn and I were saying, that is. What's left right now, sitting, and I am not aware of any funds.
Better.
That are dedicated to, so that's why I wanted to put it in there, so then you guys can talk with Charlie and Ken and figure out.
I'm slowly getting a hang of all the ARPA.
Right.
You know, there's like twenty-five different ones that, you know, that.
And, and here's, here's just a thing to think about with, so, with roads, we have aid to secondary, we have unorganized, and we have county. So unorganized, that taxation, you see the estimated tax value is considerably less than normal, cause that does not include the cities. The county road fund includes the cities and all the county residents, so. Just, just my opinion, I, I wouldn't do zero on the county roads, because that's everybody. I would look at either unorganized going to zero, or aid to secondary being reduced, or going. Aid to secondary goes to everybody, but unorganized road strictly goes to county residents, rural, non-incorporated residents, so. If we wanna be kinda consistent across the board, that would be the fund that I wouldn't tax, I would go to zero. And it would be less of a mill to the county road, but then everybody pays. Just. Just trying to explain to people that are new, that when you look at the roads, there's different things to look at, because not all mill levies go to everybody in the county.
That was just one of my questions, because it had went from six to five to now zero, so I'm glad you.
And that's why, that one point's.
Right.
But did, and we have to use all the prairie dog in twenty-four?
No.
No.
So, do we? I think we've got, I think we've got through twenty-five, don't we, Dawn? For those prairie dog funds, I believe we have.
We don't have to use it all in twenty-four that's left.
Prairie dog, I don't know if that has a.
Does it have, it doesn't have a? ARPA has the.
ARPA has to be allocated by September twenty-four.
That's COVID money?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
And that's pretty much, yeah, we got that.
So did we want?
We gotta use.
So the, the secondary roads are, that's.
Secondary roads, they cover every, they include everything.
You just secondary is everyone?
Yes.
Yep, and that's the one, the aid to secondary, twenty-four is the last year we get to mill for that.
Yes.
So, that's the one that the state is, is, yeah, is removing after twenty-four.
Unorganized, you said is?
Strictly will.
Just.
If we had organized and unorganized townships, that would kinda be where that is, but we're all unorganized, so it just falls under unorganized.
Total off-topic squirrel money, but the social services account, social service count twenty-two-ten, what does that account for again? I'm in this thing, but it's a note. Just cause there hasn't been any year-to-date revenues or expenditures, so.
I wonder if it isn't our. Okay, but we keep money in there, I don't know, why did we keep?
That's my question, there's money sitting there, but nothing coming in or going out, so I didn't know why it just sits there, if it's.
Something to do with the social, when, you know, we had the social services.
Right, and, and that's. But now we don't, and it's.
At one point, social services was state funded, and then it went to counties. But I don't know, if we're not using that fund, but I mean, it's, it's fifteen thousand, and I'm not gonna be light about fifteen thousand, but.
No, but it's sitting there, not, so that's. That was one question I had while we were. According to this. According to the August sheet, Dawn, nothing's gone in or out.
Yeah, and I mean, that's not gonna make or break this budget, but it's something to figure out.
But it's. Another thing to add, or something.
So I'm going back to Travis, so you, you could think that we should have a mill in county road and a secondary road, so that. Equal for everybody, rather than jumping in an unorganized road, so that it only taxes the unincorporated people of the county.
That, that's my opinion, yes, so like, I would rather see unorganized zero. And either aid to secondary brought up, or the county road with like, say, a mill in it, and then everybody pays. I mean.
I was just.
Yep, nope. And I'm just trying to be equitable across the board, whether you're in the county or you're in the city. And, and I.
And actually, because we loaded that ten roads in, the cities are gonna get part of that common road, eventually anyway, it's gonna be two dollars and twenty-five.
Yeah. Right, and that would help the cities, cause, we'll adjust, but also. What, what we're running. what, what we're running into, and this is kind of more of a philosophy type thing, but the state has, I think it's like twenty-three cents a gallon, and then there's a calculation for that, so county gets highway tax revenue, the cities get highway tax revenue. Well, that calculation hasn't changed since it began, the, hasn't gone up in a long time. It was in the legislation two years ago, but they've voted it down. I was just looking at some of the numbers today, so like, Bula historically has been a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand a year. Well, that went a lot further ten years ago, twenty years ago. So, you know, with the county fu, a road fund, if some of that does go to the cities, then the cities can do more patching, they can do more work on their roads.
Where are our residential people to the cities?
Correct. So basically, the city residents pay it and they're going to get a little bit of a rebate, which would go towards the roads, so. But that's twenty-five, so, some, but something to think about. Have I totally confused everybody or?
No, no, it's okay.
Okay, good.
I don't think, have everything done? No, but...
No, and I mean, it's just, like, when I'm looking at this, I'm looking kind of big picture and I just, I want to make sure we can cover expenses, take care of our employees, take care of our roads, take care of the services we're required to do. Do I think the county should sit on a lot of extra money? No. So as long as we can cover and provide the services and be where we're at, and if we can go down, great. If we hold where we're at, let's make the best use of everybody's tax money.
I don't know how you want to continue, but I know there's some on like, like page four. Carmen, between the one we had and the one we, the new one we got, just wondering where the dollar difference is, like, why things are different, I guess.
Okay.
Um, general fund supporting worksheet revenue, like it starts with general property taxes.
Okay.
So like, I think when we had talked before for like, say, coal severance.
Right, yes.
And even coal conversion.
Yes.
They're different on the new sheet than the old sheet.
Right, okay.
Is there, I, I'm just questioning, looking straight at dollars, why?
Right, because, okay, so the numbers under twenty-two, solid, that's what happened in twenty-two, those are our solid numbers. Okay, like Linda was saying, when we're looking at the estimated twenty-three, then Dawn and I went through them, and we went through what revenues we've gotten to this point, and then you change them because then you have a better idea as the year goes through, especially with different taxes. And then we were talking about, with Linda too, about, okay, for twenty-four estimated revenues, and if we changed anything, it was because of more information that we got from...
To lower the multiple?
Plus talking to you, and then, and we made a decision.
See, I thought we were lowering coal conversion, but not coal severance.
Well, what happened was, when we went in and we took what we'd earned, I think we were eight months.
Yep.
We took what we'd earned so far, and then we divided it by eighteen times twelve, that's where we came up.
Yeah, okay.
Three numbers, and then we looked at it and went, we don't everybody go higher. And so we figured we made one point zero zero three on coal severance, but we didn't want to cut it all out up because you can't, remember the ones that are going to be probably the least likely to hold consistent because of the way the coal situation is. So yes, we lowered both of those by a hundred, probably a little bit.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which, which...
I mean, it wasn't a drastically different number, but it was different, and we had discussed it at last meeting, so...
Yeah, that was just our best guess without overestimating, we tried to...
Okay.
And, and so all you think about it when it goes through this spreadsheet, these are non-mill levy revenues, so when they went down, to, to make up for that, you actually increased the general fund. But since our general fund was kind of high based on the recalculation and everything, it, it doesn't really affect it as much. But, I mean, that's how, that's how this spreadsheet kind of drives and does anything, so...
I mean, who knows what was different, so that's why it's just hard when we had an old one, a new one, and you see different numbers.
Yeah, I just wanted you guys to see that, but as we're learning too, that, yeah, they change because of a better...
Not questioning you, just questioning the numbers because they're...
Yes, absolutely.
And then I think we did the same thing on page five, the BLM monies. Before we even did the preliminary, I had a question mark, but I still have it written here. And they changed that to three hundred thousand, which I agree is a more accurate estimate. Because you'll see twenty-two's was really low, but we just got one payment, and that was the first time we'd gotten a payment in like two years because they had overpaid us.
They had overpaid, right, yeah.
So then based on the preliminary to what, you worked with Linda, the twenty-three estimate went up almost double, which based on the, what we received and kind of doing the same calculation you did with the coal severance, but that comes quarterly. So that went up, and that's part of the carryover cash reserves that go into the general fund, which was like one point six million and then went to three point six, you know, that helps boost that number, which then in turn reduces what you have to, what you have to tax for. Because you carry that money forward because you can use it to the new budget.
So the, I don't, some of the department heads had kind of questioned, like, their overall number kind of being different than what they had requested, is there...
Okay, because what I did is I took, and it's an estimate, well, you know, what I did is I took what that salary sheet we had, it also included the PICA, the MEDA, and the retirement, and I just threw it in there, bolted in there, so...
So we have, do we have that, so then it's not in two places, because like, we also have like a health insurance line, and we also have our retirement.
And that's why that's empty right now.
That's why the county share, sorry, um, page six.
Six.
Yeah, yeah, that's why that was left blank, only because I, I put it in the whole number there.
So that's what I'm going to use.
Otherwise, once you guys decide, then everything will be adjusted, and then the whole county share of the retirement will be where it's supposed to be, and then you've got your health insurance. No, we got health insurance, retirement, PICA, all that will be what we're supposed to. It's just a way to give you guys an idea of what it's going to look like and try to, for that preliminary budget. That's where I got the numbers.
So Carmen, if I have to hold the board, will they look at the very last thing, then approving the rules?
Well, it, I mean, I need the commission to make a motion to say, okay, this is what we're going to do, and then I'll put the numbers in there. But I want to work with Gwen and make sure they're accurate and, you know.
When you say make a motion, are you talking on paying the health insurance, PERS, law enforcement, PERS?
Well, you guys have to assign...
When you say that, what are you?
Okay, you guys, and, and that's the other thing Linda was saying too, any changes you guys make from the dollar, fifty, whatever, you have to make a motion as a board, yes, we approve this, and this is what we want to do, and then we'll give it in there.
So your question, Jamie, is if it will say, you know, somebody moved that, we do a dollar fifty across the board. If that passes, that becomes hard. If we say we're going to pay X percentage of the retirement, if that passes, then that becomes hard. If we say we're going to cover a hundred percent of health insurance, and we're going to take it out of that insurance fund, that becomes hard, but it, it kind of gets washed out because that money is already there.
Okay, but still, you guys have to...
We, we still have to approve each one of those.
I, that's where I was, because then I'm like, well, if you go back to then plug in the numbers, and it's already October fourth, we, what?
I'm...
When are we going to s...
I, what I was looking at today was you guys telling me...
Okay, and that, so that's...
Kind of what do you guys want to see, and then I'll work on plugging it all in?
Because I feel like then we're going to have to basically do those kind of things right now.
Or the next meeting, just so you guys can get a consensus, and then we'll plug them in, no matter how long it takes.
You can look at it, and then if there is any, any errors, or you've got yourself a little legal...
I want you guys to have a good feel for what this thing looks like with some parts, but I need you to decide on certain things, and then we can tweak it.
Yeah.
Because we don't have...
We got another one on Friday, right?
Correct.
Yes, you do.
Well, and I'm hoping we have at least four or five numbers.
I, Jean said he'd be back for that one, and hopefully Liza...
And Liza didn't say she wasn't going to make it, so...
Get all five of you here, then you guys can discuss it, decide, and then give me some, you know, solid things, and then you decide, do you want me to get in money? You know, and then we can, I'll get all these things plugged in, or, you know what I mean, you have flexibility.
That's just how I was questioning.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that makes a difference in numbers.
Absolutely, you want to see it in there before you do the final. And, and technically, you know, you could, you got till Friday, right, Karen?
Next Friday.
Like, the sixth is in Friday.
Right, because it's due the tenth.
The tenth, and I know you got, we got the thing...
Association of Counties, so...
We just want to get it done next week.
Correct.
So we got...
Yeah, go ahead.
But the preliminary that these guys are looking at right here has all that stuff included, right, the retirement, the...
Yes, yes.
So...
It's in there.
Technically, none of the, those numbers might change, but the amount is not going to...
But does it have like the one point seven six or whatever for law enforcement?
It has the rest of the retirement.
Okay.
My question to you, the overall picture, what do you think we should change, or were you trying to, you were, you had questions about?
Well, when I'm looking at, um, when I look at page three of the new one, so the, the cash reserve, so, so when you look at page three, line nine had the two point nine million, you see that off to the side in the red. That's what we approved in the preliminary. If we can get by with the two million to the right, which brings our mill levy down to thirty-eight point two, I think that's a good idea if we can still accomplish everything that we want to do, and then when you look at line two, and you still have one point nine million dollars in cash reserve, either, either you bring that down or you find things to do with that money, which is some of the things that I requested before, which we should probably vote on, probably not tonight, but like, when I was looking at comprehensive land use plan for planning and zoning, I was requesting a hundred thousand in what that comprehensive land use plan, we talked a little bit about it at P and Z, but we would get somebody that would get everything together, and then we would know where all our coal reserves are, what has all been mined, we know where our mined, reclaimed mine land is, we know where our existing wind towers are, we know where maybe some potential solar and wind are going. One of our ordinance has a buffer zone for the lake, where would that be? So like, when planning and zoning gets together, and then the commission gets together, we'd have a map that would show us where these sensitive areas are, where stuff has already been done, where stuff could possibly go in the future. It would just make, in my opinion, our lives so much easier because we'd have that. We'd have a big picture. The comprehensive land use plan could show us where all the transmission lines go, so like, when somebody comes in and they said, Oliver County is going to bring that transmission line up thirty-one and then go over, okay, what else do we have in that area? Okay, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. As CO2 becomes a thing, here's our, here's our well sites, here's utility crossings. I'm not so much worried about the dry utilities like foam and internet, cable, things like that, because those are relatively inexpensive to move, but if we got DGCS pipeline that goes up and they got a water line coming in, that's not something you just move. We got CO2 wells, those lines, it'd be nice to know where they're at, where they're crossing. So if we decide to do something with a road, hey, we can't, we can't cut six feet out of here, we're going to have a pipeline. You know, and we don't want to raise six feet either, either, you know.
Who, who does that?
Um, like a planning contractor would do that, and we could go up for an RFP, we wouldn't have to. It'd be under the threshold, you could sole source, but in my opinion, we'd go out, see who, who does that. We talked a lot about ordinance rating, we've done solar, we've done wind. The planning and zoning has basically done it. I think it would go a lot smoother if we had outsourced that. One of the things that's potentially coming is nickel processing, you know. I, I don't think any of us have the knowledge or the expertise to be rating a code for that.
The nickel people know about the nickel.
Right. Another thing that a lot of planning and zoning residents, we've had some complaints too on, people are within the setback, if we had a building permit enforcement ordinance, I think would go a long way, and when I say building permit, like if somebody's going to do seven miles of barbed wire fence, that doesn't need a permit. Somebody going to build a house by the lake? Yeah, we should probably know what that is. That would help land use, that would help everybody that uses Vanguard, everybody that does these mill levies, everything would be more accurate, it would be more equitable around because we would know what's being built. So there's certain things, so when you ask me what I'm thinking, I'm thinking there's room to do some of those things, still even get maybe a tax break based on what these numbers are showing, but accomplish a few things that, in my opinion, have been kind of lacking for, for years. No fault of anybody's, but just when you look at budgets, you try to do what you can. One of the things that we are fortunate for now is we got the house bill, fifteen oh five money that helped with roads, we got Prairie Dog money that helped with roads, so, you know, can we reduce some of the taxation on roads? Yeah, I think so, and we can still accomplish the projects that we are planning. Plus, if those are federal highway eligible, then we get reimbursed eighty percent of the cost of those, so. Which I don't think we, I can't remember if we had any of those in twenty-four.
There was a few, I remember there was some in twenty-four.
Right, but anyway, it's, it's probably not a whole large dollar amount, but those are ways that, if we're not saving up for a big road project, or we don't see in that five-year plan where we'd have to get a little bit of a head to have a little bit of a balance to create roads, then let's not tax so high on roads. You know, if we're looking at certain maintenance items, like with the road department, we've been adding gravel to a lot of gravel roads. Well, if we see a need for, I don't know, I'm just on a number, a million dollars worth of gravel, well, A, we got to, we got to secure that, we don't have that in the county, you know, then how do we pay for that? Well, then that's maybe where you hold the road thing so that you can do some...
There is a lot of, I mean, across this county, a lot of roads need a lot of gravel, so it probably is one of our hot topics that should...
So then when you look at the road funds from the preliminary to the final, maybe we hold those, and we apply that towards gravel roads. Which we're not going to get reimbursement for because the federal highway ones are highway, they're asphalt. You know, some of the money with Prairie Dog, or, you know, what we haven't used, the airport road, that six tenths of a mile, I think that should be one of our priorities in twenty-four. I think a lot of people would get behind us to get that paved.
Is that something we can still...
Is that something we can still look at since we're having, starting this year so that?
Yeah, October fourth, we could say, you know, Charlie or whomever, however you wanna do it, let's get started on the plans.
Just so that it's not, we get to twenty four and then it's just delayed and there's weather and there's all the things and then we're a year down the road and it's still not done.
And the thing with the airport road, that's not.
I think it's on the road project list, or twenty four.
But what I was gonna say, that's not, uh, federal highway eligible. So we don't have to go through the DOT, we don't have to go through their hoops, we don't have to go through Title Six, we're just gonna pay for it. We just do the plans and specs, we advertise for it.
We pay for it.
We pay for it, so it's something that could could be done in June or July, whenever asked for.
Do you guys have a, you know?
I don't have it with me, but.
Let me see if I have, because I have the project list in here. I mean, is it like over a million or?
I think it was under a million.
Cause I'm just saying, yeah, we got funds here.
Airport improvement was, looks like eight hundred, is it just like eight hundred?
Yep, eight hundred thousand.
Because we already, he, Charlie, or like, Charlie's already on here for twenty three for consulting, correct, or?
Yeah, preliminary.
Yeah.
Yeah, he did that, I guess, when we did that preliminary two, I didn't hear the specific projects, but, yeah. So that's the thing now.
In twenty three, it's budgeted to do the design for it. So we would just have to authorize them to do it. And then in twenty four, that's the construction and the construction engineering on it. Is that gate under estimate?
Well, that was for all of twenty four to break down to subtract.
Yep.
It was down to that amount or something.
But that's, if we're gonna authorize that, that's something we do in a regular meeting, we don't, we won't do it. But those are the questions.
You know, when you transfer these monies, however, you know, the amount of monies you want, that, I guess, uh, January budgets.
Right.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, so.
Look at this and then tell me, you know, what these monies are gonna be, so then we'll have this.
Right, and so if we approve that, say Wednesday, to do the engineering and then that's gonna be a project. Um, that could affect how she moves some of the Perry Doug money in.
Yeah, what this transfer sheet's gonna look like, that's the only thing, and you know, if you want it all there, just as long as we don't go over what we got, cause that's. What we got, right there, four mil.
I guess, can you put that on the budget, or on the agenda for Wednesday? To discuss the airport road?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, just under the highway, Wednesday.
Wednesday, Friday.
No, 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 the regular meeting, she's doing.
The regular meeting, the fourth.
Okay, so you guys don't wanna discuss Friday though, right? Really need to.
On, uh, agenda item four, Friday?
Here, I'll, I'll make a note here to put this airport road, but I guess, what I'm thinking is hoping Friday, the five of you can decide, okay, what do you want? And then I can work on it and get it ready, so you guys can see it before.
Right, so, I get what Carmen's asking, so on Friday, if we said. We're planning on going forward with the airport road, these are the numbers, then she can have that.
Right.
Run through the budget for Wednesday. Right, and then Wednesday or later in October, yeah.
Under the fifty first avenue.
Okay, and I do have that sheet.
Yeah, it's in twenty three and in twenty four. It's fifty first avenue, County Airport Roadway.
Yep. So as far as the budget, we could say, yeah, we're gonna plan on starting the engineering this year and we're gonna plan on. The construction next year, and then during a regular meeting, then we would actually do the authorization.
Once, yeah.
To to get it going, but at least on the budget side.
Just so she can get numbers moved around.
She knows the, that expense is probably gonna happen in twenty three as far as design and plan for that construction. In twenty four, and if the revenue source is the Perry Doug money, then we know that's allocated. So did I answer your question, Rick, as far as my thoughts on the budget?
Well, you gotta start.
Okay.
Well, I mean, yeah, I'm sure you got more, but yeah, but I mean, that gives me more of an idea what you, what you're looking at, so.
Right.
And how you look at it, so. Now, the next question then too is, like, let's see, let's, let's go back to like this here. Where do you pull those, if we, if we do the, let's, I'm just gonna do an hypothetically again, we do the one fifty. And then we say we wanted to do spot adjustments, where do we pull those funds from? Where do you look for that?
For twenty three or for twenty four?
For twenty four.
For spot adjustments for twenty?
Twenty four would be the spot adjustments, but I mean, also, you're, you're looking at the, also, you're looking at the one, say if we do across the board, that's also for twenty four.
But do we have the option still in twenty three to do spot adjustments?
We could.
That's where I think, and Gwen and.
But where would we go look, that's my question, where would we go look for that?
We wanna get the spot adjustments, if you guys can figure them out and we get an amount, then we can look at it. And we can see what we've got, if we've got any wiggle room. Or in twenty four, you know, the wiggle room, so that we can do this.
Right, so, but to Rick's question, if you do a spot adjustment within the sheriff's department, that's general fund money. If you do a spot adjustment to the highway department, that's, that's the county road fund.
Okay, so that, it doesn't, so this is the sheriff's fund here, and then we, we need to drop over here if we're gonna do one on.
In the roads. And depending on the departments, you know, we'd have to know whether they're general fund or they're special fund, I mean.
And then we can.
Yeah.
So like, say, for instance, um, sheriff's salary budget, we would be looking at it, we would pull it out of this number here, and that's what we were, that's what we were talking about there.
And and the ones you're looking at, if you had amount of increase, that would get you close, what you could expect out of there, you just wouldn't have like FICA in retirement. But you could get close, cause.
I would take it out, as long as I had something solid, we could work with, I could take it out and get it more accurate, to what it's really gonna be.
Your spot adjustments, just for round numbers, say it was a hundred thousand dollars of, of payroll. Then I would probably add in. Another twenty percent because that would be re- retirement and FICA, cause insurance is.
I think this is around forty something, so you'd be looking at about fifty thousand, fifty five thousand.
Right, yeah.
Gwen, do you have a list of employees for like years of service? I mean, like, you don't need it, like, not right now, but like, can you get that to us, just to look at?
So that makes more sense, now, now, say, now, like, for example, now, let's go.
I thought it was on the spreadsheet.
I used an example.
I think it's on one of the wage studies or something.
That is in the general fund?
I read it somewhere.
Even if we just, we just don't do that, I mean, how do you?
If we don't authorize it, it's, so like if, so they have, we'll say forty thousand in federal state. Um, that's in the expenses, it's part of the budget, however, if the commission says no, we're not gonna do that. It stays in there, but then it's not expense, so then when we do twenty five's budget. There's forty thousand in the general fund that wasn't, that was estimated, but then we'll be able to carry it forward.
That's where I was wondering, how you're gonna balance, cause if we're taking it out of here, we gotta take, that makes more sense than how we're doing this now.
And that's, that's why you see. I'm not gonna say drastic swings, but that's why you see swings from the preliminary to where we're at now, kinda like Carmen said. As we get further, we get more information, our estimates get tighter. Don's also mentioned it too, like, we can see eight months' worth of non-mill levy revenue for this, non-mill levy revenue for this. So when they estimated in, um, May and June, you had four or five months. And now you have eight, so you can get those a little tighter. Um, and, you know, if coal servants and coal conversion, they have a grade here. It's gonna be higher in our final than it was in our preliminary.
Yeah, but those, those numbers, you're not gonna know until we get any of them.
Correct, so, um, the way I look at a budget is, it's, it's a outline, it's a guideline. Um, we try to work within it, we try to make things happen, but a lot of it's estimated on both sides, revenue and expenses. Um, you know, the road department, the sheriff's department, they spend a lot of money on fuel. If we look at fuel rates and, let's say we're estimating at three fifty a gallon and. Next year it's four, well, we're gonna be high on fuel. But if it throughout twenty four, it comes in at three, well, then we saved a bunch of money. Same thing with, uh, electricity doesn't really change, but propane, a couple of years ago, it was under seventy cents a gallon. And I think we contracted for like a dollar thirty this year, a dollar seventy has been in, that I've seen contracts for, so it just. You do the best you can, but there are certain things that are market dependent and. And that's also the reason why you want a cash reserve in the general, to absorb some of those things. Well, not too much, correct, so. Good questions, hopefully we're answering them all. Any, anything else you wanna look at specifically tonight? I'm not trying to usher us out of here, I'm just trying to stay, keep the momentum and if, if we're good and we just need the other two here.
Some of the, like I said, some of mine was just the individual departments that had come forward and just said that theirs was different, but it may. If the county, the retirement and the FICA, or the county and health insurance are all in a different spot, then that's fine.
Mm-hmm, and, you know, when, when you talk to department heads, I mean, they have their sheet. Um, and we're also estimating what they're gonna spend the rest of the year, what they've spent to date. You know, we're trying, so like, if they're, if they're holding their budgets and they're under, then some of that gets carried forward and they just. You know, the expense still might be there, but how you look at it, um. And and I get it, when, when, when you get to seventy pages, but you get all these different funds, you have to combine certain things, otherwise. It'd be two hundred pages, and, um, you know. We probably don't need to know every wrench that they planned to buy.
Okay, I got, I do have a question now. Okay, we've gone down to the county agent funds, now where do we, we, uh.
What page you have?
Okay.
They have one on page thirty five, there's a question there.
What happened with the county agent in twenty, and we just found that out, we didn't know that at budget time. Um, but we can't mill, and and we used to put their extra expense that we paid into the general fund. But Linda said that because of the different wording and stuff, now we can't mill for it, but.
I thought, I thought she said.
Has to happen now, while the extension service, they can, we wanna put the, uh, they're, they got two mills. If they have two more mills, which they can go up to four mills with approval by the election, uh, the people. That would cover their budget.
Right, I think.
So what do we do like this year?
This, well, or this year they're covered, in twenty four.
Wasn't, wasn't it more like, we, we, they get two mills, right? So two mills is roughly a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay, and their budget is a hundred and sixty seven or something like that.
They need an extra sixty, seventy thousand.
Another fifty seven thousand or something, we used to take it out of the general fund, and that's not allowable anymore, is what, what they said, is that correct?
We can't mill for it.
Yeah, we can't mill for it, you can, at the end of the year, if you decide you want to give them that money to help them out. You can give them money out of the general fund.
Okay.
But you are, we're not supposed to mill for it.
We're only supposed to do the two mills or not them either?
Oh, no, we do the two mills.
But they can't, we can't mill on our general fund.
Cause there are mills, you can't mill them.
Right, so, so basically, we can include it in our general as a line item.
Okay, that's.
But it can be an allocation at the end, that's taken out of our cash reserves.
Yes.
Okay, so, that's why I was, I was wondering, because they said we couldn't go out of the general fund, it was like, where are we gonna go get it then?
So what we were gonna do is, we're working with Craig, uh, to get all the information together, then we wanna come to the commission. And request that cover it for them, so they don't have to change their budget, but their budget's covered, but then we're gonna mill. We're gonna put it on the ballot for another two mills, so then they can give their four mills, and then they're covered.
He said that's happened to several counties around the state already, that so.
And and this, the budget season is the time to be looking where our tax evaluation is, where certain entities need money. And you brought up the county agent, that's a good one, where we should try to go to the voters and get authorization to go to four. Not necessarily saying we need four, because like you said.
They need it.
Well, I mean, but.
See, if you're twenty, and you only need a hundred and eighty or whatever.
Right, 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 so, um, and then there was a couple of other ones where, where, where at like point two five and that's the max, and but.
But if we go to, put it on the ballot, they can go up to point seven five, and that's a historical society, and they do need it.
So, so when we get through the budget, then we should be looking at these and say.
What do we need to add?
What do we need to add to the ballot so that, so that we're not using the general fund to supplement something that could actually be. Milled for. Um, and, and the other thing to think about on, on mill levies, our, our evaluation changes every year. So just because, you know, say a county agent was three point nine five based on this evaluation, if the valuation goes down. We hit four, but they still don't get all of it because we didn't have enough value to cover what was needed, but.
But then you would go back to.
An allocation, but like if we get, um, the Vanguard. Finds out that our valuation's actually closer to fifty six, or say between the county and the cities, there's ten million dollars in homes built. Well, our valuation's gonna go up, so that gives you more taxing authority within those mill levy limits. Um, so like, that's why I'm pro economic development, pro growth. Because it brings more value into the community and hopefully it's new residents, new businesses. So we're not taxing the same people, but then we're distributing the tax load over more people. And more entities, and then maybe everybody pays less, because there's just more to go around.
Is there anything with the cities that have the JVA and all, and MAKE Ed, that they shouldn't have to pay for both? Or can't pay for both?
They can't.
They can't, like, that's a century.
Right, so.
Can't mill.
We can't do it this year, but something to look into and, and I've had multiple discussions with different attorneys. On their thought process, but, um, a JVA and economic development are not always the same. It's based on their bylaws and how they're set up, but one thing to look at is. If we go to the mill levy on the economic development or JDA, however you wanna term it, the JDA is the one that's authorized as a mill levy. Then maybe we say, okay, the county's gonna do, and I'm just throwing numbers out, I'm not sticking us to anything. But let's say we do four mills and it comes out to two hundred and ten thousand, and then it's, Stanton has JDA, Hazen, Buella. I I don't know on the other ones, but let's say every town has, has a JDA, and, um, if. Buella's four mills usually generates forty thousand, then out of that, two hundred and ten, we, we, um. Uh, taxed for, then we give forty thousand to Buella. If Hazen's JDA evaluation was like thirty five, then we give thirty five to them. If Stanton's was ten thousand, we give ten thousand to them, and then, once you take that down, then that would be the remainder that MAKE Ed could use. Just something to think about, it's, it's too late now because that'd have to be in the prelim, we can't add those.
Yeah, no, I just.
Um, so that's how, but then we have to communicate very specifically to the cities and say. Okay, if the county's gonna mill for, for JDA, for all the communities in the county. And cities you can't, you can't mill, because like Carmen said, you can't, you can't be double taxed. Double jeopardy.
That's been some of the citizens' concerns, is that they're already paying to a JVA, Stanton, whatever, but they're not getting the new wellness center.
And then everybody has to be on that board, a representative, of all the towns, so everybody's involved.
And the other, I mean, like, for example, it'd be like, when you're, when you're milling at the county level, then they, I mean, every county resident is. Is, or, or texted, is milling on that rate, so I mean, if you're gonna be asking, uh. Somebody that lives, uh, twenty five miles south of, southwest of Buella is gonna be. Working with JDA and, and paying mills in JDA in Buella, or Golden Valley, or wherever it's gonna be.
Well, that's why I said, when you look at. Well, that's why I said, when you look at the cities, if, if they're already taxing, for Beulah, for instance, is forty thousand, well, that's based on their value, so if it comes from the county, uh, the city's portion of our value is generating them forty thousand. Do you get where I'm going on that?
Kind of, not at all, but I mean, you're still like, we're taxing everybody versus, just, just. Whereas the city, the city is taxing city residents, correct?
Right, what I'm saying is that, when the city does it now, and just because I'm familiar with Beulah, Beulah's mill levy is approximately ten thousand a mill, that's why I'm saying four mills generates forty thousand dollars. Well, that's based on their ten million of value, which is twenty percent of the county's value. So if we're doing the mill, that's their value that's generating that tax revenue. So out of that pie, they get their forty thousand, and it's like, they did it themselves, but it's through the county. So your instance, somebody on the county line, in the southwest part of the county, their value's going to the county portion, but anybody that lives in a city, that's why we would look at the city values and the cities, what they're already taxing, and that's what they would get, like.
Well, it follows the same thing, and what I'm, when I was asking earlier, where, where does that forty thousand from wage study come from? It's like we're taking money out of the general fund, and it's, so it's almost the same principle, you know, different variable.
Right, but it's through a specific mill levy, that's for a specific.
Entity, I, I understand, I want to, let's say full tax, but I don't know.
And, and when you look at, um, the case in point is the unorganized roads, that pulls all the city values out and is strictly the county values. So we already have kind of an example in there, where you've pulled out the cities, and this is the value that is being taxed to non-incorporated residents. And then when you look at the overall, that includes the cities, but you can see what the county would generate based on that one fund.
Kind of like the same thing, just it looks like it, and everybody that gets paying taxes, they're still also paying for the unorganized roads until, so per percentage.
Uh, unorganized roads is strictly county residents, so nobody in the cities.
It will come out of that.
Yeah, whereas the county road and the A to secondary is based on total value, so everybody, everybody that lives in Mercer County, whether you're in the country or in the city, is paying towards that. Unorganized is strictly everybody that doesn't live in it.
Basically, that one.
Correct. And that's why I said earlier, if there was a, a road fund to go to zero, I would say unorganized would go to zero, and then you'd still tax in county or A to secondary, cause then everybody pays.
Yeah, it makes more sense now that I'm talking about it. Okay, I understand a little more.
Any other questions?
Um, Carmen, that, you had said something about this last week, but like the EM.
Okay.
Didn't, you didn't move it back up?
I didn't, because when I did it and we went and talked to Linda, it had messed with the main appropriation.
On my page seven.
So that's why I wanna make sure I said that, so if you guys wanna raise that back up, then we need to do that, up to where it was. Which was, I think it was nineteen thousand on the salary line.
Yeah, I went from seventy-one to fifty-three.
And then twenty-two, if we're gonna hire me.
Yeah, page seven, uh, it's like the fourth line down.
Yeah, we did what it went, yeah.
Yeah, and that would probably be a freight.
One. Yeah, we didn't change it.
Unless you wanna do it tonight.
No, I was just wondering.
I mean, we can, I mean, we have a quorum here, so, what? My, my thought process was, oh, sorry, done?
Um, didn't you give that nineteen thousand out because it made our appropriations too high, or is that why?
Okay, and it was too high when we had everything in there, the dollar fifteen across. I did not do it after we went back to the twenty-three salaries, so I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get time to mess with that, I kinda forgot. That's why I mentioned it at the meeting.
I just don't want it to get lost, yes, and that's why I mentioned it too.
So I think.
That line one eight on the general fund, you just put that nineteen thousand, and you're telling us that appropriation is too high, and you can't do that. That's why she took it out the first time.
Right.
Now, when we pulled all the sal, when she pulled all the salaries out, now there's room for that nineteen thousand, but there wasn't room for it.
Right, yeah, when we had done it at the regular meeting, so what, what I.
It was initially seventy-two thousand.
If you guys, like, when you're all here, you decide, what are we gonna do, what are you gonna do with salaries, things like that, then I'll put that in, plus I'll make sure I add in that extra nineteen thousand, cause then we should have some wiggle room. The thing is, once you guys decide, what do you wanna change here, I'll get it all in, and then that's when we look at what's affected. And then we talk about that, but you definitely need time to tell me what you want, I'll put it all in there, then we need to meet before and look at. Okay, so think about this, if you guys can figure it out Friday, perhaps give me till Tuesday. I just wanna, whatever I'm doing, I wanna make sure I check it with Gwen, and, uh, we can go through and make sure that I've got things down. And Dawn, I wanna be accurate, and when I present it to you guys, I want you to be accurate, so you guys can really see what your numbers have done.
Right, and.
We think we can give them till Tuesday, so. You can be around.
Well, I mean.
I still just transfer out, where did that?
Okay.
Realistically, it's like we, we move stuff around, it might affect it in the numbers, it might end up, it might be odd whack somewhere, so we have to change.
That's right, and that's where I wanna do it really good, whatever you want, make sure my, or things are in action, you guys can really look and see what's what, before the final.
You'll come back and say, well, that number doesn't fit our provision, I'm like, we're still gonna, we have to tweak it somewhere else.
Yes, exactly.
Eight.
That's one, page eight.
Does it result on this page?
Jamie's question is on, so page three, one B, the transfer out of twenty-five thousand, it looks like it comes from page eight.
Of twenty-five thousand, but where does, okay, where does the twenty-five thousand initially come from?
What is it now, three, one B?
No, one B.
Page three.
Page three.
Transferred out, twenty-five thousand, that is, uh, we're transferring that to the building fund. And we do that every year.
Okay.
That's where that twenty-five thousand.
That's it.
Kind of a future building.
It wasn't on the old one, but it was on the new one, that's.
Yes, because the calculation would take it over there.
Okay.
But, yep, that's.
And so it's still a calculation thing, okay.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
So say that social services, that fifteen thousand, since the A, county agent does need that money, is it possible to say, we want that fifteen thousand to go to the county agent?
Well, I would say that we're gonna have extra, you know, we're gonna have wiggle room in the general fund, and I want, I'm thinking it should just come from the general fund. Because that fifteen thousand of social services, we need to, because you know that Abacus is doing that social services study, and we need to do some research on that too, cause I'm working with them. The county still pays certain amounts for social services, like the state's attorney doing social service work, so I wanna know a little more about that before we.
And that's just why I'm asking, cause it just hasn't happened.
But I would say the monies for the extension service should come from the general fund.
Well, I got a question now too.
Okay.
Okay, uh, page one-three. We were at line nine, we were at forty-eight, eight twenty-four, and it was point nine, now we're at, we're gonna be at one oh eight, so that's gonna go, our levies are gonna change again.
Okay, the red, the one oh eight thousand two forty-six, right?
Yep.
Okay, that's where you don't wanna go over that number, go down.
That was just the number that.
That red number is the number the preliminary budget was approved at.
A new projected number then?
No.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so as long as we're going down.
Okay. I thought that was gonna be a new projection or something.
Red is where we wanna stay under.
Right, and then, I see in these, um, it, it's in multiple ones, but, um, uh, line eight, on page twenty-three, just cause we're looking at that one. The allowance for delinquent taxes, that was one of Marv's questions.
Okay.
Which.
And here's the thing with that, when we talked to Linda, and she said, you know, that all the, we should have money put aside, and, and Dawn looked across the board, it's about four percent delinquent taxes that we have, and that's why we went with the four percent. So that'll cover it, and then, yeah, that's why we went with four percent.
Yeah, and I'm just saying that it, it wasn't in a lot of the preliminaries, but it's in a lot of the finals.
It wasn't in the first copy, but it's in the second copy.
Yep, and I'm just saying that was one of Marv's questions, about having delinquent tax reserves in there, which I can go either way on those, but.
That's just where some of the questions, my questions have come from, is that we have an old copy that we looked at, and then now we have a new copy, so where were the changes?
And every time we've talked about the budget, I've always had what we approved in July for comparison.
Yeah.
Um, cause that's, that's what we approved, that's what we have to.
Stand by.
Stand by or go less, you know.
County infrastructure twenty-one eighty fund. I'm on, I backed to this one, but it's like, again, doesn't have any, doesn't have any year-to-date revenues or expenditures, but it's got cash on account.
That's per, okay, that, I didn't write it down on this one, so that's why. It was a large amount that it seemed to be one of those, okay, thank you.
The passbook savings, is that the CD interest? Thirty-five thousand? Passbook savings twenty-nine eighty is the font, account number.
That one, twenty-nine eighty is, um, checking.
Checking interest?
Twenty-nine.
Is it just, oh yeah, cause here's CD interest over here.
Yeah, twenty-seven five is the CD interest, so there should be over, um.
Two fifty-three? Okay. But the pa, the, is that interest just sitting there, or is it on like a CD that you can't access it if you need it?
No, David, it also do a comp that twenty-nine seventy-five and that twenty-nine eighty, well, that's money that you can use for stuff.
One. Okay.
Yeah, cause you don't recapitalize the CD interest, you, or it depends on the CD, but.
Right, this money that's sitting in the twenty-nine seventy-five is free, because now any interest that goes into county infrastructure, or HB fifteen oh five, or the R fund, they all capitalize, so those are in the twenty-nine eighty, twenty-nine seventy accounts. This twenty-nine seventy-five money should be money that's just free, you can bill all for.
It's, it's not tied up, so, okay, okay.
Well, my notes will say available during the year if possibly needed, huh?
Yep.
You don't have township roads anymore, or what?
Well, we have township roads, but we don't have organized townships, cause township roads.
Twenty, twenty-one twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Is that state totally get money there?
Uh, I believe so, um, cause, uh, yeah.
What do you need, Jimmy, one?
I don't know.
Fifty-one?
Fifty-one.
Okay, but, yeah, so, w- we, we designate county roads, and then there's roads that are designated as township roads, and then there's different funding sources for township roads. If we had organized townships, then those townships would actually get the money, but since we're all unorganized, it comes to the county, but then we track it, so that we know we're spending township revenue sources on township roads.
An extra point.
It's a very rapid circle you just talked.
Well, when you have fifty-three counties in the state, and thirty-two different ways to do it amongst those fifty-three counties, it's, it might even be fifty-three.
It actually makes sense, but it was a very rapid circle.
Right, and I grew up in a county that had organized township, so like if you went to this township, you were in the Grandville Township, and then you were in the A Creek, and then you were in the Red Cross, and then you, but here it's just, you know, Township one forty-six north, eighty-seven west, and I know you're around Beulah. Anything else, Rick?
I think.
You have plenty to think about?
It's a key we go for.
Jamie, any other questions?
No, Gwen, I will send you an email just for an official request of the years of service, but otherwise, I, that would be my biggest thing for wages, is years of service, for a spot.
For a step or a spot increase, yeah.
Yeah.
But.
Cause even the steps, like when I look at the wage study, the steps don't overly make a lot of sense to me in some aspects, just looking at personal career and where people are at, at the, and, and the thing is, it was done in twenty sixteen, and the one I sent out, that Ashley asked for, that I sent out after that, and I sent it to everybody, what I took was all the commission-approved yearly increases, and we started there, and I know when they did that in twenty sixteen, they went by a percentage every year, so then that just, yeah, and that's what we got, so. Right, but I know that there's some, I think, when that wage study, what I've been told, when that wage study was done, there was, you know, you could maybe start at a three, but don't go over a five, like there were some rules that went with it, but.
It, it depended on that experience when we first started.
Exactly, so it was, it was not cut in stone, because it, and so, and I think that's where some departments haven't necessarily used it, because of the guidelines of it were.
And I'm sure, and I know I found a bunch of, you know, like Sam had updated one, uh, Shanna had updated one, but I didn't know what was what. So I just took, we found the original twenty sixteen, and that's what I did when requested, I sent it out, so it's time for.
Did the commission ever a- adopt that wage study?
Did they officially adopt it?
I, I heard no.
I think they officially adopted the twenty sixteen, when it got done, cause I was at that commission meeting, and I believe they adopted it, but to keep it up officially every year, I don't think that's ever been done, you know, cause every year it should be updated and brought to the commission to approve, and I don't believe that's ever been done.
I mean, do we necessarily need a whole brand new one, or does it just need?
I think the, when we met as department heads, we didn't want a new one, we wanted to work with what we have. That was the consensus.
Right, but wasn't there money put in this budget for a new one?
Oh, yeah, yes, and that is still in there, you know?
Yeah.
That was in the preliminary and it's still sitting there and I believe it was forty thousand.
Right, and that's, but I, yeah, that was a consensus I also got from department heads was that they didn't want a new one. So that's where I was questioning where the forty thousand came.
But it was there, the preliminary, and yeah, they didn't want one, but like you said, you can do it.
It was.
Use it for.
It was included in the preliminary and then since then, the consensus was no. So, you know, that would be something we could say, take that forty thousand out or just, we're not gonna approve orange state. And it's, it's in there as an expense, but it'll never get spent and then it'll just get carried forward when we do the twenty-five budget. So.
Good choice, right?
Yes.
Yeah, um, apple, orange, grapefruit, lemon, so.
One more quick question.
Yep.
Oh, that, Dawn got, and I just gave it to her, it was about that land, the reservation land. Rick was asking about that document, so we just.
Yeah, we can't discuss it, but it's just, it's information.
Information or.
Oh, well, I would put it on, just information.
Just information, okay.
Tell you what, if you want it on the agenda, then let me have the copies and I will give it back to you after you go before. Unless you wanna.
I just wanted to know where to look.
I guess let's just leave it. If there's questions, you can put it on there.
Yep, okay, anything else? Okay, what's that? Well, I usually don't have a motion for adjournment, I just wanna make sure everybody's covered for tonight, so. With that, it's about seven PM, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you on Friday. Can I, do you want me to?
Did we bore you all to that? I said, did we bore you all to that?
No, good question.